Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? Thank you.
Okay. Come up, please state your name and that you've been sworn, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is David Potash, neighbor. I own lot number nine. He owns lot eight. And the question for the discussion is lot seven. Mine is a practical comment of what I observed due to seawall repair. That a barge and the push moved through there to that lot seven, which was being empty and used for storage, problem-free. So I am not overly concerned about safety. I am not overly concerned about what I would call ingasigas. I'm not a marine person. So when I looked at it, it was a practical thing. I am not familiar with the technical stuff done about the lifts and so forth, which to me seemed very logical. Therefore, that's why I had no objection to approval or your approval of the property being used. I watched the barge go in and out of there 10 times. I was not concerned about safety. I don't know precedent-setting. I know that's a concern. So as a property owner, neighbor, I did not object to his request.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come to the podium and state your name and that you've been sworn, please.
Joe Como, and I have been sworn. I just wanted to agree with Ms. Pravky and Ms. Matthews, because I own a vacant lot at another location, and the guy came in, they added an additional dock and lift with the exact 180 degrees, flip-flopped out. So he's got his powerboat on one end and a huge catamaran on the other end. And I went out and looked, and the tip of his cat comes right up to the survey line, the marker drilled in the seawall. It is right to the seawall. So as you said, it's completely legal, but what it does is, in that 45-degree line, it puts an obstacle so that in my vacant lot, if somebody came in and put a larger dock or wanted to put a larger boat in, just exactly the same scenario you said is exactly true. The maneuvering gets to be very tricky due to the size of the vessel, and you're completely obscured from one end, even though you're legal and compliant, just by the size and the position of the boat, because it is legal, because I checked with code about it, but it makes for a very touchy situation considering the size of your boat. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the citizens? Please come to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, Pat Niles, Gateway Point Condominiums, District Two. I didn't come here this week with this on my mind like last time.
You have to state, have you been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn. The reason I'm bringing this up is that this really is fun. The gentleman sitting next to me brought his papers, and it gives even a bigger picture, colors, of exactly what the neighbors look like, and it looks like it's a Google map. So it kind of gives you an idea of exactly these properties, larger than that for a perception, of exactly what you're looking at and exactly what the boats are right now. You can get a Google map pictures of it.
Mitchell.
See? They're interested. And the suggestion I have is, I'm looking at it from two ways. At Gateway Point Condominiums, it looks a lot like that. You own a place, have to speak condos, in this case, not houses, and then you have your docks. And I ended up getting a 20-foot boat, so at one point, I was a captain. And I know what it's like, I'm not good at this yet. I know what it's like to try to dock a boat. It's different than parking a car in that the currents change. And you almost have to have a feel. It's even tougher than parallel parking a car, because it's different every time you do it. And the ability levels of everybody, the board members may be pros. And it's true, the bigger boats, I learned this one time at the Isles Yacht Club. I went over and we rowed on one of the big ones. The way they turn it, you literally can go in and out, going sideways, backing, putting it in instead of going in like I did. So there are things to consider on that. My question here is, when it was discussed, I think I got this right, that they went around and asked the owners if they were in favor of it. And my question would be, if this is an association of homes, did they vote on it as an association before even coming here to the Board of Directors? Because I think then you're taking a look, because then I ask the question. It's one thing when you're voting on it and you're not affected by it, but does your vote change if both the person on your left side property and on your right side do that, so that you have it smaller on both sides? And it's kind of interesting, the thought kind of went, maybe it changes your view. So it's often in any survey, it's very important to ask more than one question.
Sorry, you're three minutes up, but thank you.
I'm Fred Court. I'm Vice Chair of the PGI Canal Advisory Committee, serving with Mr. Dye. I just have a couple of points to...
And you have been sworn?
I have been sworn, yes, thank you. Just some clarifying points, I think. Mr. Dye is correct in that most meetings, we are approving two and three variances. But I think it should be pointed out that the great majority of those are not straight-line middle-of-the-canal, they are end lots, Keystone lots of 40 feet and similar size. Most of those, you can't put a lift in or even a dock sometimes without encroaching on the 45-degree angle. And our practice has been, if not our policy, has been to work with the owners and try and make it happen. It doesn't always work. So that's point one. The second point is, we did not have the pleasure of the precedents that you mentioned. We did not see prior approvals similar to this to consider when we were considering the original proposal. So that's the first I've heard of it, but I don't doubt that they were there. In fact, one of them must have been on my watch, so to that end, it would have been helpful to have it at that point. The final point is that in the packet of information, there is a letter which, instead of this proposal before you, which is the proposal we saw, suggests another proposal. And I know that that hasn't now come up, so I don't know where that is in terms of overall. It was certainly not a proposal which would not have moved the lift, would not have encroached on the 45-degree angle, but would have added a second lift. I don't know what we would have done if that was the proposal at the original time. I can't speak for anyone but myself, but that would certainly be a more minimal solution to the issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Go ahead.
Let me talk about the... Oh, go ahead.
We're going to allow the petitioner the opportunity to have a final summation. You had a question of staff, and maybe it'd be appropriate for the petitioner to hear the question and answer, suppose doing piecemeal. That's my thought.
Right, okay. Just a question for staff. So in today's request, we are now not only listening to the appeal for the primary lift, but we are also having to consider the second lift as part of this part and parcel? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
And the Canal Advisory Committee will not hear that part of the...
No, they heard that and denied that.
They denied for the primary lift. I'm hearing from Mr. Court that they did not have the information on the second lift.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. It was my understanding that was before you today is what was presented to the advisory committee. After the denial, there was an alternative plan that was offered as a compromise. And I indicated that it would not be appropriate for them to present that alternate plan to the city council without having gone from, starting from scratch, applying for a special permit with the revised plans.
Okay.
And then there was a suggestion that they, as part of this proceeding, reduced their request in an effort to maybe get approval on a limited basis. But as I understand, the applicant decided to move forward with the appeal today on the plan as it was presented and denied by the advisory board.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. And again, for the record, Bob Nicola, and I have been sworn. The map or the Google map that was presented, we refer to that sometimes as the bubble map, but the significance of the red shaded circle is all those properties, anywhere where that red circle touches, those property owners are mailed a packet of information regarding the special permit request that is to be heard. So there were, I believe there's 18 separate properties within that circle that were notified by mail.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask, you, at least from what I heard, that it was recommended by staff for approval. What basis did you recommend approval for this?
Again, when we consider this, we look at this Section 6-6-J4 and evaluate solely on those merits. And as a staff, in reviewing the plan, we felt that it met all those six criteria, and so that's why we recommended favorable approval.
Okay. Nancy?
Just a question for David. Just because a special permit was issued in one instance, does that precedent, you've always, I think before, said everything stands on its own merit?
Yeah, actually, in addition to the word discretion...
Yes.
The word precedent is also a bad word. As it relates to all of these either variances or special permits, each case stands on its own merits, because there are rarely two incidences that are factually identical. And so anything that was done before would have been based on the circumstances and conditions of that particular hearing would not serve as any precedent whatsoever for the decision that you have to make today.
Anything else? Okay. So can we ask Jake?
If the respondent would like to do a rebuttal.
Jake, if he'd like to respond?
Yeah, just to address the difference in the proposals and everything, we originally, when we looked at the appeal, we said, well, maybe this 45 thing is going to be too hard for everybody to swallow. Let's go to Plan B, modify the lift in its current location, and figure out how to keep it as safe as possible, and just go for the PWC lift, which is the second lift, which is kind of out of the way. And that's the letter that's in the packet. But then we were told, no, you're appealing the special permit, so you've got to go with the whole thing. That wasn't a decision that we made to go with that. It was, that's what we were told, that we had to go with everything that was submitted originally for the special permit. So I mean, there's always, the only thing that we can't work around is, if there's no approval for the second lift or the PWC lift, that's dead. There's no way to compensate for that. If you have to work around the boat lift and increase the capacity and figure out how to better balance it, then that's something that we'd have to figure out how to work with. That's not a good solution, but it's something to work with. If the, you know, if the personal watercraft lift is approved, at least then that goes forward. If it doesn't, there's no option for the personal watercraft at all.
Let me clarify, because it sounds to me like there is a little bit of confusion as to what the direction was. And that is, and based on the letter. You can, right now, if you wish, withdraw your appeal and your request for the boat lift special permit, and just have this board consider the denial of the personal watercraft lift, so that the only decision that they would have to make is whether the personal watercraft could be approved as a special permit. So you have that opportunity today, if you wish, is to withdraw consideration of the boat lift special permit.
That's actually what we had... That's consistent with the letter that we filed.
Exactly, but just for clarification purposes, if you would have done that before today, you would have been required to go through the process again.
Right.
What we're giving you today is the opportunity to, now that we're here, is to withdraw your consideration for the boat lift special permit, and simply ask that the council consider the special permit as it relates just to the personal watercraft.
Okay, then we'll withdraw, if we have that option, then we'll withdraw the request for the movement of the boat lift outside the 45 and only retain the PWC lift as it's in the special permit request.
Right. So that the council will now know that the only thing that they would be voting on on this appeal is whether or not to grant a special permit for the personal watercraft. They would not be granting a special permit for the boat lift.
Glenn?
To clarify, the letter that you sent that was originally asking for the change of direction, it says it was going, the personal watercraft lift was within the 45-degree angle level.
I think it's within the 45-degree angle. It can be within the 45-degree angle. A portion of it's going to be outside the bunk, and so I would like to keep the 40, outside the 45 as a part of that. That way, I don't have to cut part of the bunk off. That part that's outside is irrelevant anyways, because the PWC is going to totally cover those bunks.
Okay. So the boat lift would stay exactly where it is, the boat would stay exactly where it is, but you're asking for just the permission to put a personal watercraft lift in adjacent to the seawall, by where the dock and the seawall kind of come together, correct?
That's correct, except that your comment about the boat would stay the same is, I think, beyond the scope of what we're talking about here. We're only talking about structure.
I'm just looking at the overall picture. The lift will stay where it is.
Yes.
Okay. And then what we want to approve at this point, if you're withdrawing your appeal, what we are approving only is the second lift for the purpose of putting a jet ski on it.
And outside, a part of it, being outside of the 45, right. Because it's under 85 feet, two lifts.
Thank you.
Any other comments? With the new proposal, with just the personal watercraft, I don't see any...
Have we closed the public hearing?
No, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Relative to personal watercraft, from my perspective, I don't see that interfering in any way with the navigation of the lot next to it. It seems to me would be mostly his problem, because it's so close to the seawall, so close to the dock, and so small egress or there. So I'm just throwing that out, so.
I would agree with that.
I guess we can entertain a motion.
I will entertain a motion. I will make a motion, I should say, that we accept the denial of the appeal and approve the second lift for the personal watercraft outside of the 45-degree angle.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Trying to keep it legal.
I know, I know.
I do have my form that I will be filing in the originals folder. Okay, next we have two second readings, one on AX-01-18 and one on ZA-01-18. The first is annexation of the loop, and the second is the renaming of the historic overlay district. If anybody would like to speak on those two second readings, now would be the time. They are not public hearings, but we will take citizens' comments on those two items. Okay, seeing none, we will move into AX-01-18.
This is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Punta Gorda, Florida, annexing within the corporate area of the city of Punta Gorda, property generally described as multiple-loop properties, Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, containing 13.78 plus or minus acres in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, amending the official boundary map of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, directing the city clerk to provide certified copies of this ordinance to the Charlotte County Clerk of Court, Charlotte County Administrator, Florida Department of State, and Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, changes, motions?
No move approval of AX-01-18.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve AX-01-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next is ZA-01-18, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Punta Gorda Code known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article III, regulating districts, Section 3.9, CC City Center District, subsection A8 and 15, permitted special uses and structures, renaming the Tribune Woods Historic Overlay District, amending subsection F, special exceptions, paragraph five, Tribune Woods Historic Overlay District, amending section 3.14, paragraph K, renaming the Tribune Woods Historic Overlay District, amending Article VII, renaming the Tribune Woods Historic Overlay District, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Questions, comments, changes, motions?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve ZA-01-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
And just for the record, the change from the first hearing was to have this district be renamed the Bethel St. Mark Historic Overlay District.
Thank you for that clarification. Next, we have the consent agenda, which we have three items. The city clerk, the minutes of March 21st, and then the legal department, we have two, the monthly litigation report, and the inter-local agreement for the library. Does anybody want to pull any of those?
No.
No? Would anybody like to speak on the three items on the consent agenda? Now would be the time. Anybody like to speak on consent?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have the regular agenda, so citizens' comments now on the rest of the items on today's agenda, which would be approval of the 2018 ADA transition plan, the change to building division staffing, the action register report, and then we have some appointments for committees. Would anybody like to speak on any of those items? Now would be the time. ADA, building division, and action register report. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the budget. First is the ADA transition plan.
For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design. Staff is requesting allocation of funds for projects to occur in fiscal year 2018 to implement the City of Punta Gorda ADA transition plan. Just briefly, the transition plan was adopted in October of last year and is in compliance with, helps assist the city, bringing the city into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The transition plan identified a planning cost level estimate of approximately $2 million worth of projects. In our current CIP, for five years, we have $1.1 million identified to begin working on those transition plan products. Obviously, implementing the plan requires a great deal of prioritization on our part to figure out what is the, has the highest impact in terms of addressing those noncompliance issues. So we're looking at existing conditions, accessibility, and safety and security, and scoring those items based on the visitor usage of our facilities, the costs, and the location of those amenities. For 2018, staff recommends that we focus our funds on Cooper Street Recreation Center, which has a high degree of public use, and is part of a public-private partnership, as New Operation Cooper Street did receive funds to do a lot of interior improvements, which helped to address some ADA issues with inside the building. Additionally, we want to focus on the Government Center complex, as, again, this is a high-public-use facility that the city has, and it serves the critical city services and also access to the democratic process. So for 2018, we propose to allocate $300,000 to these projects. There's delineated in the table, funds for each specific grouping of projects related to the A.C. Freeman House, City Hall, signage within the City Hall and City Hall Annex Buildings, minor modifications to the City Hall Annex Building itself, site improvements to New Operation Cooper Street, and contingency funding, in case we got ourselves wrong.
We're asking for the approval of the budget allocation so we can get started on these projects.
May I ask a question? What's included in contingency? What does that mean, really?
Well, the contingency fund there is if any of the, we have estimates for how much each of these projects will cost.
Okay.
And if one or other of the projects comes in a little over, we want to be able to have the flexibility to get the program implemented without having to come back to city council and request a couple of thousand additional dollars for any specific project.
So is the plan to get one contractor to do all of this, or what is the plan?
I believe the plan will be to look at logical ways to break these projects out. There are certain portions that are similar, so we could group together something from the A.C. Freeman House and New Operation Cooper Street, because they may be similar enough. The signage is probably all just going to be one specific contract, because it's all interior. So there are various pieces. This may end up being several contracts for any individual line item facility in this table.
So then after we approve it today, then you'll just take it through procurement, and it'll just go?
It'll go, yes.
Okay. Yes, Nancy?
Is installing a ramp in here something that you plan to do over break?
I'm not sure, certain as to...
Can I sit back there and shake your...
Not certain as to the timing of any of the particular projects at this point, but certainly the ramp facility for the dais and other improvements to council chambers are part of this program.
I'm just looking around here, I'm wondering how we're going to do that, so. I'm just looking around here, I'm wondering how we're going to do that, so.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the appropriation and the plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have change to building division staffing.
Building division operates as an enterprise fund, so period-
Good morning. Randall Cole, Chief Building Official.
Never mind.
Never mind.
That was fast.
Go ahead.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're, I'm requesting an additional building inspector position. Starting a little early, get it posted, because the demands of the industry right now, it's, it's going to probably take a while to fill it. And with the main criteria for a building inspector's license in the state of Florida is construction experience, and, and construction industry's not giving up anyone right now, so it may take a while. So I want to get a head start on the other municipalities that are thinking the same way.
Questions for Randy?
Just out of curiosity, how many current building inspectors do we have?
I have three full-time inspectors. I have a combination plans examiner, inspector, and then, as you saw in my memo, I've been going out to-
Right.
Keep everything manageable.
Any other questions, motions?
I'd make a motion to accept the request.
Second.
So that's an appropriation request?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to appropriate the funds to, for the rest of this fiscal year for the building official. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
As I was about to state, they are an enterprise fund, so they, the permit fees pay for all of their services.
Cool.
Keep up the good work. No unfinished business. The next, we have new business, which is the action register status report.
We have revised the action register report. We have, we publish this every week, every Thursday, after we update it, so it's been on there, on the website, and continues to be on the website on a weekly basis. We have requests, you, you've requested we present it to you quarterly. So you have in front of you the, uh, the list as of March twenty-ninth, and I'm not going to go over all of the projects. I want to make sure that all the projects listed here, I think we've included all of them. We usually go after each council member, after each council meeting, and we may add some as we go along, or add to the, for instance, we talked about the day docs today, so we'll add some more language to that item. And when that gets completed, we'll finish that off, and it'll show up at the end of the list. So this is going to be fluid. Emerald Point, we actually may see the light of the end of the day on that one. That's going to go to the Planning Commission in April, and then over to council, probably the second meeting in May, if everything goes according to schedule. Ponce Park, you see that we have no progress on Ponce Park. Ponce Park, there will be no construction this year at Ponce Park, that's pretty evident. So we keep in contact with the Wildlife Center. They're okay, as long as we can at least start construction next year. So we're still waiting for the design on that.
They're having a big event Saturday at eleven o'clock?
Yes.
Luna's fifth birthday and the unveiling of their new branding.
The historic district unified branding, again, you'll see that one will go away now, now that that ordinance has been approved. So you won't see that. Special exception ordinance amendment, you're going to see that the second meeting in May. Some of these I've already given updates on. The bird cut-through, we're still, it's still in front of the Corps of Engineers, and we still have not received a proposal back from the property owner. The Burnstar Isles Undergrounding, FPNL, has sent us a preliminary layout. We have some comments on it. The committee in Burnstar Isles is meeting with the finance staff to go over the assessment. The assessment of seventy-five dollars will be on this year's tax bill, and we will be scheduling those public hearings over the next number of months. We might even have that finalized by June, the assessment. So seventy-five dollars will be showing up on the tax bill.
It's also my understanding you're meeting with the Burnstar Isles Underground Committee this afternoon to go over these preliminary plans?
Yeah, the committee is.
Yes.
Committee is. Let's see. Fence height, ground for a while, that's actually going to be on the second meeting in May for council agenda.
This says April eighteenth.
I think that's what you meant, April instead of May.
April eighteenth.
No, you said May.
Second meeting in April.
You said May. I had heard it, too.
May, April, June. Much better now, so. ADA capital improvements with your approval today. We will update that. The Arrow Plant, staff is meeting with the construction manager today, I think it is, to try and see if they can finalize the not-to-exceed bid for the Arrow Plant. They're analyzing all of the bids, and the water, the well production, the water production wells are under construction now, so maybe they will, we will have a not-to-exceed bid that we can present to you very near future. We need to get that moving. Herald Court signage, we will update that. Design, we talked about some of these already, so I'm not going to. The semi-automated trash collection, the material for the carts have arrived, and they are being assembled at the Public Works Utilities Complex.
So how was your day on the route, or your morning? How many hours did you do?
Just a couple hours.
Okay. How was it?
It was great.
Okay, good.
Actually used the new machine on a couple of spots. It works great. The folks like it, because it saves on physical work, less back injuries. The really, the, the rollout of everything, I think we're looking at mid-April still. So a couple weeks. If, if everything goes well putting the carts together, they're going to be delivered, and we have packets ready to be put in the carts, just like the recycling packets, right? So this is cool. Just moving along. I'll be back on that truck soon enough.
All right. Can we take a picture of that?
You don't want to take a picture. I get more in the way than I do of production. Height restrictions, city center, highway commercial codes. The next round of meetings on, on that, well, we're putting together those code changes, but on May, on April, excuse me, April, April sixteenth, at the PGI Civic Association Building, we'll be having a meeting on appropriate growth, a community meeting. So everybody is welcome to come and offer your insight into the next phase of our communications plan. That's, that has been approved. We are working on the code changes for the medical marijuana dispensary facilities. What are we looking at? Medical marijuana?
I just saw on last night's news that True Leave is looking for two more locations in the state of Florida, and they're looking for the legislature to approve that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll think of, uh, May, June. It'll be advertised.
May, June? So May Planning Commission, June.
So when you get those dates, you'll add those in, in the, yeah, perfect.
We've, um, it's drafted, it's just going through its final review.
Okay.
Employee pay and classification study, Cody is looking at all of the, they're doing the survey now of surrounding areas. That's moving along. We're getting there. Airport Protection Overlay District, that'll be on the next council agenda. Succession planning, we have drafted a, some, a, a succession planning process. HR, Human Resources is looking at it, adding some language to it. So we'll, we'll have that to be able to present to staff and city council eventually.
We didn't, we did have a discussion, Southwest Florida League of Cities, we're in discussions with Florida Gulf Coast University, which Bob Peterson, one of our local residents, is employed by them and is part of their continuing education department. So we met with Dr. Thornton, who's his boss, and Bob Peterson, talking about Southwest Florida League of Cities, and one of the things that they do is put together workshops and training that may be needed by any entity, not just government. And when we had our South, our last Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting, succession planning was, was key to all of our different cities. So we're looking to put something together, some kind of training or workshop, or get some kind of expertise, which there's a lot of in the Southwest Florida area. So what FGCU does is they go out and they find the expertise, and they put the whole thing together and, and invite who, you know, put out the emails, and, and so I hope to find out by May, hopefully, if we're going to have some kind of succession planning for any government entity, because it's, it's a really hot topic with everyone, not just our city. So I'll keep you posted.
Fair share impact fee study. Dave, do you know how many proposals we received?
Two.
We've got two proposals that we will be looking at and bringing back that back to you for approval, to do the update of the fair share impact fees. Nothing more to the report on the Boca Grand Drainage. The Activity Center, we have not sent that out for proposals yet. We're putting together the scope of services. The committee has met. And so, once that's out on the street, we'll add that to the list. Seawall repairs. We have a community meeting for the PGI area, April twelfth, from one to five, at the PGI Civic Association Building. Those of you, the public, can come and take a look at your particular area, ask questions about the progress, and staff will be there. April twelfth. We'll have more announcements on that.
Is that going to be like an open house format?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, open house format.
What were the times?
One to five.
Okay.
We, it'll show up in the weekly report-
Okay.
-this Friday. And we have not scheduled one for Burnstar Isles yet, because we have not finalized the schedule with the contractor.
Nancy?
I was just putting your hands up.
Oh.
I didn't see it.
Okay, so we approved the contract last meeting, so it's been two weeks ago. Have we yet scheduled the meeting with Marine Contracting Group? I get questions?
For the record, Rick Keeney, yes, you approved it two weeks ago, and then procurement has to collect all the insurance papers and do all the documentation. The PO was issued Monday afternoon, I believe. So it's Wednesday. I don't know if we have scheduled the meeting with them or not, but we can't schedule the meeting until the PO is issued.
Oh, okay.
So.
All right.
But be assured, but be assured, we will.
You know, we have a lot of people that are very anxious.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And I understand, Howard, you said you would schedule a similar meeting for BSI?
At Twin Isles.
Yes, once that's-
We will.
Okay.
By the way, for future reference, we are not talking fifteen plus or minus miles anymore. We are talking ten to twelve miles, based on the FEMA inspection report.
Okay.
Is our timeline still accurate of eighteen months?
Uh, we'd say two years.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
Yeah, any other questions on the action register? Nope. Okay, next we have recommendations from city officers. Howard?
Yes. Got an email back from the county, Charlotte County, and I sent it on to the city clerk. They're looking at possibly trying to schedule something for the library, May fourteenth. Now, I don't know what that means as far as our schedule. I don't know. May, May fourteenth, does that-
Anything else?
Is that a-
It's a Monday.
May fourteenth, a Monday.
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 Is that before a council meeting?
Yes.
Before the second May council meeting.
Does that look okay for folks, if we can schedule something on May fourteenth?
Sure.
May fourteenth?
This says Sunday on this.
Yeah, I have Sunday. Uh, May-
I'm looking at the calendar here.
Fourteenth of two thousand and eighteen is a Monday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this-
Why did it come up as Sunday when I pulled it up the first time?
And this one, too.
That's weird. Yeah, no, you're right. That's, that's not what it said the first time.
So what is it, a Sunday or a Monday?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Can I email back and say, see if you can work on something for May fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. Let's see what they come up with.
Our calendars, our calendars have April and, and May wrong.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we'll, I'll, we'll fix that. So on Monday, the fourteenth, then there are agenda briefings that day? Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work around that. I mean, a groundbreaking only takes a few minutes. So I'll send back something that tells them, work on. Okay, all I got.
City attorney?
Nothing further, thank you.
City clerk?
Yes, the first thing I have is the Donation Review Committee. The Historic Preservation Advisory Board has made their recommendations for their three members to serve on this new committee. That would include the Chair of the HPAB to serve as the Chair of the Donation Review Committee, and then they have also nominated Mr. Sterns and Gamblin. This requires your confirmation of all three seats.
Do you just need a verbal confirmation, a motion?
A motion would be-
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this slate for the Donation Review Committee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Okay, those are, just to clarify, those are just the HPAB-
Oh, just the HPAB portion of that Donation Review Committee.
So we have the others coming up here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, next thing under boards and committees, the vacancies. We have two three-year terms on the Utility Advisory Board. We have an unexpired term for an alternate on the Code Enforcement Board. We have two unexpired terms on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board, one for an alternate, one for regular seat. And we have one four-year term on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority.
What member is that? Do you, oh, it's just the reg-
That would be Pat Oliva.
Okay, so she's not the resident member?
She has already indicated her interest in being nominated.
Okay.
Okay, moving to nominations, we have an unexpired term for an alternate on the building board. We have two eligible applicants for nomination.
Nominate all?
Thank you. All right, then also under nominations, we have a three-year term on the Utility Advisory Board. We do have one eligible applicant. If you'd like to nominate and appoint, you meet so-
Nominate and appoint Mr. Ret.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. Ret to the Utility Advisory Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Okay, now the Donation Review Committee, this is under appointments. Since we only have one eligible applicant from a local organization that's concerned with the arts, that would be Ms. Watermeyer. If you have no objections, I, I, there's really no point in trying to vote, since we only have one representative, and we only require one representative. If we could just go ahead and do the first thing, appoint her, I need a motion for that, if you're agreeable.
Nominate and appoint?
Ms. Watermeyer, for the arts.
As the art.
For the art position.
Thank you.
I thought that, um, excuse me, one second, but I thought that the cover letter that came with Ms. Metcalf's resume indicated that she could be either or.
I believe it was just a personal interest in-
It said, or a representative of a local organization concerned with the arts. And she went on to explain that in her resume cover letter.
Go back and look.
Well, it's, she does say that her background includes a family auction business, which was included, glass art, antiques, and other items. However, the bylaws of the Donation Review Committee are looking for an actual member of a local organization.
Okay.
So I did not, and I looked at the organization that she's a member of, it's not a- It's not a local organization.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
So, we have a motion.
I shall move.
Nancy already moved, do you second?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve Janet Watermeyer as the local art representative for the Donation Review Committee. All in favor? Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Thank you. And then, these are your voting forms for, this would be the representative of a local historic nonprofit organization?
And the appointee is Ms. Bertha.
Okay, and just for your information, then, their terms will begin April 26th. That will actually be their first meeting. They have an item to review.
Nice, cool, very good. Next, policy and legislation. I don't believe I have any items, comments, just Peace River Wildlife Center has the event this Saturday, and then the next one is Friday, the 13th, I believe?
Yes.
I don't have the times with me.
It goes from 4 till 7, and we've got the ribbon cutting for the Ladies Remembered mural at 5:00. So, I know I told Pat Campania that I would come afterwards.
Okay.
I said the same thing.
All right. So, there's two events on Friday, the 13th, which would be the Peace River Wildlife Center and then the Ladies Remembered ribbon cutting.
Yes.
It's also Mckale's, Mckale's birthday.
Also Mckale's birthday. As far as other events, there's the Over the Edge, which was mentioned earlier by Jane, which is the 14th as well.
9:30.
9:30. All the way up in Murdock at the SunTrust Building. I know it's a long way, but we'll make the trek for our chief.
We should have a caravan. There we go.
I think that's all that I have. Council member comments, we'll start with Jahah.
All right. My brain is coming back, I was writing down the date. I, since the seawall thing is moving along, I just want to suggest something to think about is that since we had talked before about doing a preemptive assessment in terms of being able to get ahead of this 12.5%, if because of the fact that money is cheap right now, if we were to get a loan, say 15-year loan, have the assessment paid towards that, and then when FEMA pays their money back, then we can just basically, FEMA would then cover it. Just so that we're not surprised with this, because even if FEMA were to be on time, we still have 12.5% of a large amount of money due. I mean, that's one way we can get ahead of this.
We are already out on the street getting a loan.
All right.
Yeah.
And we are planning to do an assessment.
April 9th we open.
April 9th, all right.
Okay, but we are going to be doing an assessment in both PGI and Burnt Star Isles this fiscal year.
Not retired yet.
Yeah, tell him that.
Get up to the podium, Mr. Finance Director.
He's a has-been.
He's a short time.
He's been dropped and. So, are you good with that?
Hundred percent.
Anything else?
Nope.
Lynn?
Just one quick thing. I had someone ask me last week if we would consider, when we do proclamations, if we would stand at the podium adjacent to the person that's receiving the proclamation award, like the county commissioners do, because they thought it might be more personal. Just throwing it out there. People feel like we have like a wall between us when we do the proclamations, sitting here reading them, so I just thought it might be a nice gesture.
I'm sorry, I was reading an email. I did not hear what you said.
Well, aren't you putting together a policy on proclamations? Didn't we talk about that?
Well, a policy on, on?
Requests.
Procedures.
Yes.
We could do a policy on proclamations as part of that. I got some feedback from the clerks. Most don't, they, they just, you know, if someone requests a proclamation, some do. They, you know, they want it to be locally related, they want it to, you know, be specific to their city, and so we could, we can propose a procedure, and you can decide whether you want to do that. What was the comment about?
What I was suggesting is that when we actually read the proclamation, that we stand down at the podium with the person that's receiving it, just to make it a little more personal.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. You know, I've been at the county commission meetings when they've done it.
And then what they do is they assign one person. So, we would just have to each take a, take a turn.
Yeah.
They don't, like, you don't go, and then you don't go.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's on musical chairs.
One person would read all three, like?
Yeah, that's what they do. Yeah.
We can do it however you want to do it.
And technically, what they do is before they even do that, they vote to approve. They actually formally vote to approve.
Yeah.
Gary?
One comment about proclamations, and I'm not sure how to solve this, but when we do public proclamations, very frequently, our proclamation is word-for-word the same as the county's.
Same, yes.
If there's a way that we could demarcate that so that we don't negotiate. I mean, we've split it, we said first, we said second, and it sometimes gets a little.
So, not this, the person who reads it at the, at the council meeting should be different than the person who reads it?
No, no, our proclamation should not be the same.
The language.
The language is literally, it's like they're getting it off the same website, website.
Well, the clerk writes the proclamations. However, I request that the, whoever's requesting the proclamation to provide the language, I cleaned it up, I make it pretty, I usually, they sometimes, very, very wordy, so they're, they're cut down to fit within our format. So, if they're a lot of work, I can try to.
What I've done?
Yeah, yeah.
I can try to make them a little different, but.
Well, when Ken and I, we went to the Walk for the Poor, he read the top half, and I read the bottom half.
Yeah, and I've done that.
And we both said. Because it's, it was basically the same.
Yeah, I've been in a situation, the same thing, and I just said, you know, I'm not going to read this because it's, it is the same. However, thank you very much, and we appreciate it, and just.
And remember, the proclamations are being made at the request of someone. It's their wording, even though I, I might, I get a final approval from them on the wording, so I don't know that they would want us to change the wording for the presentation.
Quite honestly, but they are the same people. The audience is thankful that they are only hearing one.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we, if we want to do the podium thing, then we just assign every meeting, it's, you know, do a rotation like you have been. I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
Almost said something, maybe something unusual or special.
And what we've tried to say too, working with Karen on these for a couple of years now, that they really need to have somebody here to accept it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which we've been pretty lucky lately, you know, but we do get requests where they're like, no, just put it in the mail. I mean, obviously, we're not going to read that at a council meeting. Sometimes, like, I just signed one today that's going to somebody.
And I, and I have another one where they just wanted to proclaim it, mail it, but it's not a local organization, that one will deny, but maybe we need to have some, some kind of criteria. So, maybe a procedure of sorts with criteria would be helpful.
And I think that would be one of the things, is that we're only going to read it if somebody local is here to accept it.
Yep, I agree.
Any other comments? Nancy?
No, no comments.
Gary?
Just a couple of quick moments, just to let my fellow council persons know, I've been up to a little project. I hope to present it at the next council meeting. I'm moving up the schedule because of the way our community discussions have been going. But as we've been discussing things such as height and trying to wrestle with some of the issues and so forth, it came to my thought process that we're dealing with many of these issues in a segmented manner, rather than in a more unified or integrated calculus. So, I posed a couple of questions, and my intent is not to make any proposals next, in two weeks, but rather to bring up questions for discussion and perhaps to help us may possibly consider developing a calculus to wrestle with the issues that we're dealing with the city as a whole. Give you an example, a couple of things that I'm thinking about in terms of, if I compare our staff, staffing of our city today compared to 2006, we've had a 21% decrease in the amount of staffing we're having. So, from time to time, you've heard me saying, you know, how great our staff's been doing, and we all have acknowledged that they pull their belts in after 2008 and after all that's going, but we still haven't recovered to that, and they're running at a 21% deficit based on per thousand population. You know, try to keep it an apple and apple. That's just one example. And another is if we start, if we look at this in a more holistic way, there may be opportunities that we have passed that might be able to be developed, that maybe the opportunity has changed since then. To give you an example is, council member Matthews had proposed early in her tenure sitting up here for a little triangular park in her neighborhood. And I remember saying that it's not financially prudent and being somewhat, well, that particular property, first of all, has gone down in its pricing quite significantly. And if we orient ourselves in a different way, and our consensus comes, then these might be actually developable projects. And in my mind, I'm thinking over a 10-year period. At the same time, wrestling with the issue of how to get our reserves up to a healthier level much more rapidly than we've been just inchworming along. I think the time is, from my perspective. So, these are the types of questions in my, we're going to try to keep it less than 12 slides, and very short, but I hope to present to you folks, because this is the only format I can talk to you guys in, so that we can start this discussion among ourselves, and hopefully, and from my perspective, develop a calculus so that we can more effectively deal with the other issues. Because, and what precipitated this thought process was, Sunseeker is going to change the equations of what we've been talking about. It's right across, it's going to bring, it's not directly anything that we can control of, but if we want to keep our sweet little town, a sweet little town, inviable and healthy, we have to take that into consideration to make sure that it doesn't overpower what we want to have here in Puntagorda. So, that's all I have to say today. I've said enough, I apologize.
Thanks for the preview. Citizens comments, any topic? Please take the podium to my right, you have three minutes. Citizens topic, citizens comments, any topic?
Pat Niles, Gateway Point, District 2. This one is really a thank you. I took the suggestion and went to the meeting they had about the budget, and it was very, and it was very interesting. And if you might get the flavor that you feel you're in the peanut gallery here, that isn't what happens at these meetings. And really.